Okay, so I will call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Everyone turn their mics on, please. Mr. Brown?
I'm here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Ruth?
Here.
Mr. Sowalish?
Here.
Mrs. Walters?
Here.
Mrs. Galbraith is here. Mr. Albrecht?
Here. Mrs. Ruth, would you please read the mission statement?
Sure. Our mission is to empower each student to positively impact the world for a bright new future.
And I think I got that order. So we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Yes.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
For which. One nation. Indivisible. With liberty and justice.
Thank you. Okay. So before we get started tonight, I just have like, read something to the public here and our staff and students. District 201U finds itself today in unprecedented circumstances due to COVID-19. I want to take this opportunity to share from the Board of Education, our heartfelt condolences to the families suffering from illness and who have lost loved ones. The Board also wants to acknowledge the courageous efforts of our unbelievably talented staff of teachers, administrators, food service staff, custodians, and security personnel. These are trying times and we appreciate these heroes that have come in every day to attend to our students and families, particularly those in need. We are also immensely proud of our scholars who persevered through their studies while missing their school, teachers, and friends. We also want to acknowledge the hardship this virus has bestowed on our seniors at no fault of their own. Please also know that the Board's overarching mission at this moment in time is the health and safety of our students, families, and staff. In that regard, we will continue to adhere to the guidance provided by the state. Tonight is our first virtual meeting. Please bear with us and we'll get through this together. So next up is public comment. We have eight tonight and for those watching live stream with our virtual meetings, public comments can be emailed to Terry Tobin before 5:30 on the night of a meeting and they will be read aloud. Our first public comment is from Jamie Healy. The subject is "Public Comment for April BoE Meeting." "I want to extend my gratitude and appreciation for all our teachers, admin, staff support, and other employees of 201U for all their hard work and flexibility during this uncertain time. My children..."
Nelson, if you can hear me, you're muted. Your mic is off.
Okay.
You're back. You're good now.
Read. The statement.
Read. Please read it again.
I will. I will. "District 201U finds itself today in unprecedented circumstances due to COVID-19. I want to take this opportunity to share from the Board of Education, our heartfelt condolences to those families suffering from illness or who have lost loved ones. The Board also wants to acknowledge the courageous efforts of our unbelievably talented staff of teachers, administrators, food service staff, custodians, and security personnel. These are trying times and we appreciate these heroes that have come in every day to attend to our students and families, particularly those in need. We are also immensely proud of our scholars who persevere through their studies while missing their school, teachers, and friends. We also want to acknowledge the hardship this virus has bestowed on our seniors at no fault of their own. Please also know the Board's overarching mission at this moment in time is the health and safety of our students, families, and staff. In that regard, we will continue to adhere to the guidance provided by the state. Tonight is our first virtual meeting. Please bear with us and we'll get through this together. So, thank you." So did everybody hear that?
Yes.
No. Okay, so we have tonight on public comment, we have eight public comments that I will read and as I was trying to say while I was on mute before with our virtual meetings, we've asked that public comment be emailed to Terry Tobin prior to 5:30 on the evening of a meeting and we will read them aloud. So the first one is from Jamie Healy. The topic is "Public Comment for April BoE Meeting." "I want to extend my gratitude and appreciation for all our teachers, admin, support staff, and other employees of 201U for all their hard work and flexibility during this uncertain time. My children's teachers have been phenomenal all year, but I have been so impressed by all they are doing while navigating these uncharted waters. The extra activities like Spirit Weeks that each school's been doing has created an extra sense of community that is so needed during this time. Teachers work so hard as it is and the way all of our educators are coming together to create engaging lessons over the computer is amazing to see. I also want to thank Pam Panza and her entire staff for continuing to feed families during all of this. My family and I are proud to be part of the 201U community. Thank you." Thank you, Jamie. Can you get a drink of water here? Second is from Tim Peepenbrink. The topic is "Save the Dome." "Thank you for the opportunity to address tonight's meeting. The residents of our school district have been hearing of the district's plans for the future, which includes consideration for demolishing several buildings, including the Warrior Dome. While the plans aren't finalized yet, many residents feel that losing the dome would be a waste of a true community asset. As a group of supporters to keep the dome, we feel there are missing points that should have been considered in the proposal from district architects, which have listed the cost of dome upgrades at over 12.6 million. One, the structural integrity of the dome was not evaluated. It was stated, however, that the dome was not suitable to use as storm shelter. How could that be known, in fact, without an evaluation? Two, drainage issues were not looked at for a solution of the moisture problems in the lower levels. Three, concerns about the atmosphere inside the dome have been questioned. The lower levels are in a musty and dank condition due to being closed up for a long time. We've approached companies that would cleanse the area at a much lower cost than proposed, especially if they are no longer used as locker rooms. Four, request for a group of interested and qualified people to inspect the inside of the building was made, but with the social distancing and lockdown orders in place, it seems like that is not possible at this time. Blueprints and elevations of the dome site have also been requested, but access to the buildings for retrieving documents has not been given. Five, according to the recent calculations based on the size of the dome as part of the old sixth-grade center, it costs the district around $600 per month in utilities to keep it as is. That cost could be paid for only a few... That cost could be paid for by only a few events or rentals each month to cover those expenses. The Crete Park District has an interest in the dome for their activities. It should be noted here that there is a petition with over 750 signatures and it says, "We are encouraging the school board not to demolish the dome, but to include it in their building plans and/or make it available to community organizations for activities and events." Have board members and facility committee members actually walked around the dome inside or out to see what repairs and improvements could be made? There are upgrades and improvements that will have to be made, but do all board members have a copy of these proposed upgrade costs? We feel that these costs are exorbitant and in some cases not needed to be done immediately or in their entirety. Reviewing these individual costs with qualified contractors and taking a look at what is actually needed for the dome to be a public facility would be the best way to get an accurate and fair cost of these upgrades. These numbers are from the architect's proposal dated February 20th, 2020. Replace existing domestic water piping, 442,000. Repair, refinish exterior walls and structure, 100,000. Re-roof the facility, 1.1 million. Replace or upgrade interior finishes, 1.1 million. Renovate locker rooms, 2.4 million. Enclose exterior egress stairs, 1.5 million. Storm shelter upgrade and new ES, 810,000. New three-stop elevator for accessibility, 150,000. New fire suppression system, 176,000. Replace HVAC and TCs, 1.5 million. Upgrade lighting, 442,000. New FA system, 132,000. Utility upgrades for dome after SGC demo, 407,000. Page two of the report has another $2.2 million for architect and engineering fees and the contingencies for design and bidding construction. The sum total is 12.6 million. The total figure would be greatly reduced and there are grant possibilities to help defray those costs. With your decision to keep the dome in conjunction with the school district, community groups, organizations, and individuals, we can make the dome a destination for many people to attend events and activities of all kinds. Use of the dome will be a feather in our cap and it will enhance our region and be a good stimulant for the recognition and commerce that we all desire. Sincerely, Tim Peepenbrink." Number three. From Billy Morgan. Subject, "Public Comment." Billy Morgan. "I want to thank the Crete-Money School Board for continuing to meet and doing the people's business for our students, faculty, and staff at this critical and unprecedented time in our nation's history. Certainly, none of us have lived through anything quite like this. Though it is difficult, it is important to have a steady hand and continue to make sure that the bills are paid and critical operations continue. And I commend you for making sure that our proceedings are streamed online and public comment continue to take place. With COVID-19 changing our daily life, it's important that we take this time to get things right. There's no need to rush and make big decisions now, especially as no one knows what a post-COVID world will look like or when it will begin. Instead, now is the time to gather as much information as possible, as many viewpoints as possible, and make as many plans as possible. His heart is with a solidly designed plan with robust answers to thorny questions that will convince the public of the need for change. Thorny questions like a proposed new school in University Park, what would it look like? Where would it be? What designs do we have? A petition to save the dome with more than 700 digital signatures as the district talked to every possible stakeholder and utilized all the connections it has to make sure that there are no alternatives to demolishing the Crete landmark. Thank you again for your commitment to the public service and your willingness to continue to do the people's work while under a worldwide pandemic." Thank you, Billy. Number four is from James Young, titled "Property Preservation." "Hello BoE members and Superintendent Coghlanese. I sincerely hope that you and your loved ones are healthy and in good spirits. As you're aware, these past few weeks have had an unprecedented impact on our students, district families, and all of the 201 communities. The coronavirus is a new and unique challenge we all face together. I have been a CMSD 201U resident for 22 years. During that time, I have never seen, heard, or experienced anything like COVID-19. It has halted many daily human activities in our county, state, nation, and the global world. Consequently, I want to encourage each board member to look further ahead and take advantage of this opportunity to respond in a way that is greater than the fear of this health crisis. In the midst of these uncertain times, CMSD 201U can be an example of grace to those affected within and outside of the Warrior community. Keeping the dome will be a valuable resource for alternative living, serve as a testing facility for first responders, become a storage center and can be converted as a temporary treatment facility for immediate aid. If the United Center McCormick Place Enclosed Hospitals in Blue Island, Elgin, and Chicago can be reopened and transformed for humanitarian purposes, surely we can save our dome from destruction and invest in it for multiple purposes. Consider these statistics from the Illinois Department of Public Health as of Monday, April 13, 2020. Confirmed cases of COVID by zip code. 60417 Crete 47. 60449 Moni 23. 60466 Park Forest 156. 60484 University Park 41. We must cease all efforts to demolish the dome because these statistics are alarming. This adds to the other credible perspectives of thousands of residents who voted yes to being included in future school district reorganization plans and to over 740 district residents who have signed the online petition to save the dome. As we approach the final date for voting on our dome, we must not forget we're in this predicament together. Everyone can and should benefit. Save our dome, don't destroy it, invest in it. In the event the BoE decides to continue with its efforts to demolish the dome, I want to recommend that those voting members who reside in Crete recuse themselves from voting. The public image created to vulnerable student populations, school staff, and minority community is not and never has been conducive to the goals of equity. We cannot afford to repeat history or go backwards. Let peace transcend all levels of understanding. Take care, James Young." Number five. This is from Levona Swilly. "Subject, Crete-Money High School Prom 2020 Cancellation. Good evening, all. I hope everyone is safe, well, and healthy. I've been discussing with my high school senior for the last few weeks the idea of her senior prom being canceled. She was very understanding about the seriousness of COVID-19 and what is more important for her and her classmates to practice social distancing during this time. In addition, we were both disappointed because we've already spent almost $1,000 on the dress, shoes, undergarments, and deposits on hair and makeup appointments. However, even in the midst of disappointment, we are looking for other opportunities for her to still have a prom moment because of the pending cancellation after the mandated shelter in place has been lifted. However, to my dismay, on the evening of Friday, April 10th, my daughter's attitude went from laughing to melancholy within seconds of viewing social media and reading the disheartening message from Crete-Money High School Principal Ms. Trish posted on the website. I believe that posting a letter and not having outlet for seniors to discuss their disappointment was unfair and highly insensitive. This announcement should have been made through one of their classes or through a scheduled online announcement from Ms. Trish. As a parent, I want to know if other options were considered before a full cancellation was made and if other schools are rescheduling their prom, why not Crete-Money? Warm regards, Levona Swilly Fields." Number five. This is, I don't have a last name, just from Karen. Subject is 2020 Prom. Suggestion, maybe we have both the graduation, if it gets canceled, and prom on the same day during the summer? Or when we are able to gather in groups, that is. Maybe have graduation Saturday morning and then prom that night, all in one day. Some seniors will be going to college, some may even be going away, may want to plan a last-minute vacation with their family, if possible, before heading off to college. So having it both on the same day might be easier for most, if not all, to attend both in one day versus having them separate. And at least we're not taking those memories away from them and we're giving them one day to dress up and feel special, basically giving them their day, albeit late. But at least they're getting their days, which they deserve. My daughter is a senior and I would love to see her graduate I would like to see her graduate and enjoy her prom, just like we were able to do months ago. Thanks, Karen." Number seven. This is from Katie Sylvester and the subject is Prom Thoughts. "As a business owner in Crete, I would like to be a partial sponsor for our seniors CMHS to have a senior prom. I think it would be a wonderful if all the businesses in the district and parents alike stepped up to put on a prom. I don't think this is something that we should be taken away completely or canceled. I would be willing to help in any way to make this happen, ensure our students that they're always a priority in our community. We can do fundraising, collect money for tickets, search for a discounted venue, and make this happen for future leaders head to college. Please let me know in what way my efforts can help. Katie Sylvester." Number eight from Cheryl Albrecht and Carol Millsap. Subject is 2020 Prom. "First, we completely acknowledge the seriousness of COVID-19, but we remain hopeful that the end will be sooner than later. With this being said, we would ask you reconsider the cancellation of prom for 2020. This pandemic has affected so many ways, but right now we are thinking about the seniors. Prom is the rite of passage for any high school student. We have to try as a district and communities to honor that rite of passage for our seniors. They deserve it. We have a group that will grow in numbers, that will partner with the district to host a prom for our graduating seniors. We hope that you will reconsider and take us up on our offer, make our senior class know that we are looking out for them during this pandemic. We look forward to your response. Sincerely, Cheryl Albrecht and Carol Millsap." And that's it for public comment. So next up is departmental updates. I'll hand it over to Carol.
All right. Thank you very much. What we wanted to do during this discussion today is make sure that we had an opportunity to have every department share with the board as well as the community what has been going on in the district behind the scenes during these last four weeks of social distancing. Certainly are very proud of all of our staff, our students, for the gallant work that they have been doing and certainly want to give them that opportunity. As you can imagine, these are difficult times that we're all going through. There is no rulebook in the administrative handbook on how to handle pandemics for such a large amount of time, but we are all using our strengths, our collaboration, to do the best that we can and we have been very proud with the results of this community, our students, and our staff. Our priorities have always been, number one, is safety. Two, engaging the learning of our students that have been gone from us for several weeks and also looking at the social and emotional well-being of both our students and our staff because our staff has missed our students as much as they have missed us and their friends. As I said, staff and students have done an exceptional job following the governor's social distancing guidelines. We have done so much with the e-learning, the food services, we've mentioned, but the buildings have also done an enormous job of keeping spirits high and contacting students, doing special celebrations, and that has been immensely helpful. And even the public comments tonight, so thoughtful in reaching out and emphasizing what you're seeing in the community. We certainly do appreciate that, to know that our work is being noticed. The biggest questions that we have been having here in the district and at the building level is, when are we going back? When are we going back to school? And I wish we all knew that. I know all of you are doing the same thing that we are doing. We are following the social distancing guidelines. We're waiting to find out what the governor's directions are going to be. We are closed until the end of the month. However, like you, I'm watching what's going on in the other states, other counties, to decide whether that's going to continue or if there's going to be a shutdown for the rest of the school year. And that could be highly likely. We're following the news and the analytics about how COVID is working. We are hearing about the flattening of the curve, but how much longer? There's a lot of information out there about how long for social distancing to make it effective. They've been talking about a second wave that may be coming in the fall is looking at the statistics. So these are some things that we have to be very mindful as we start going from thinking forward past really this school year, but thinking towards summer and even thinking towards fall. We are trying to be proactive and not reactive as best we can in reviewing some of the major events that are coming forward. We have done a great job with our e-learning, but the next big events are prom and graduation. Graduation at the high school, eighth grade, but prom. Prom is scheduled for two weeks from now. That's May 2nd. And we know the kind of work that needed to be done for prom takes weeks and weeks in order to do that. And we understand that May 2nd is not likely. So I think the question becomes, what do we do with that situation? These are really big decisions to make. None of these are taken lightly. We do know how this affects our students. We were all high schoolers. We have children. We have children that have either gone to graduation prom and some that have not. And we know how disappointing this can be for students, but also parents and community members. So this has been probably one of the most difficult decisions that we've had to make because we are guessing about what's going to happen. We don't know and it's very difficult to make decisions when we don't have all the facts. But people are asking, what are we doing? What's going on? We are buying outfits. Are we canceling flights from families coming in? We have been getting bombarded from the high school with wanting to have an answer either way. So we have been trying to figure out what is in the best interest of the safety of our students, but also the social and emotional well-being as well. So these decisions have certainly been weighed upon and discussed. The question becomes, do we postpone or do we cancel? What is the difference? I know many people have given the suggestions and we had thought about it too, just postponing. You know, what does that look like postponing till June, July, August? There are a lot of factors in the postponement. What we don't know is, will social distancing be lifted even in June or July? We are also making sure, are we going to be opening in August? We don't know for sure. So the postponement and setting a date, when we don't even know if we're going to open in June or July, is again guessing. And as you know, our staff is gone. All our teaching staff is gone in June, July, over the summer. So it causes a lot of plans that we would have to really consider and think through. Then we need to think about if we just cancel, what does that mean? Last Friday, as mentioned, Ms. Trish did write a letter that was put on the website to inform students that the prom that was to take place in two weeks was going to be canceled. Canceled because not knowing what was coming up and not having other alternatives ready, even for June or July, not knowing if we were going to be even open from social distancing at that point, was worrisome. Now, we do recognize the letter did not go out exactly how Ms. Trish had intended to it. But we wanted to make sure that people knew as quickly as possible and that this was actually a very difficult decision for us and one that was not taken lightly. So again, canceling or postponing. We just don't know when we're going to reopen, even in June, even in July. We did hear over this last few days about the disappointment in the community. We have heard and we realize how disappointing this is. So we have been talking to try to figure out what are some other alternatives that we can do? But more importantly, how we can enlist the ideas of our students, our parents. Parents already tonight gave some ideas, their thinking. But we need some help in figuring out what would be some alternatives to prom. Perhaps virtual alternatives to prom. What if we don't open in June or July? So we don't want to miss that opportunity. If we postpone and wait and then we don't open, we will have missed all opportunities to do anything, even virtual. And we don't want to do that. We want to be proactive instead of reactive. So we would like to focus on sending a letter out to families tomorrow with a form with students and parents to have them help us figure out some virtual ideas or suggestions that they would help. We have seen some ideas out there in other states and other communities about, you know, posting pictures of students in their prom dresses and having a virtual prom that way. We've seen families dressing up and having prom at home. You know, so a variety of activities so that we are perhaps celebrating that. But our students and our families have, you know, a host of other ideas and we want to reach out and listen to them. So I have been talking with Ms. Trish today. We are working to put together a form that will be coming out tomorrow for a short period of time. We have a small committee at the high school that will be looking through those ideas and coming up with an alternative virtual prom situation as quickly as possible to make sure that students are at least getting something just in case social distancing is not lifted in June or even July. The other questions that have come up is what is going on with high school graduation and middle school graduation? Now, there are many districts in our area that have already canceled them both. One example would be the Bloom School District. I understood that they've canceled. One example would be the Bloom School District. I understood that they've canceled one, if not both. I know Crystal Lake District 155 way up north is canceled. And there's other districts that are beginning to talk about this canceling because of the uncertainty even about social distancing being lifted in June or July. We are also concerned about losing that opportunity to do something for our students. The high school is working to explore, they're working right now about exploring virtual graduation and what that can look like. Virtual graduation as well as some alternatives out there to see. They've already started that. The eighth grade grad they are think, they would like to just cancel that. However, they would like to replace it with something. They are looking at in August, probably mid-August to create a farewell picnic where eighth graders are invited there. They would be ordering t-shirts for t-shirt signing. And the eighth graders have an opportunity with their teachers to have a farewell and some closure. So we are looking to find a way to replace a social setting and just not to move on. So these are some of the things that we are working with. They are not ideal. We understand that. But we're trying to make the best situation out of what little information we have. But I don't want to miss an opportunity to at least do virtually something to acknowledge our students and let them know we do care about them and we do recognize their disappointment that they were the ones that were in this place in their senior year or their eighth grade year. Any, any questions on that?
Yeah, Dr. Coglinis, this is Mr. Brown. I really appreciate you being proactive, given what the whole world has been going through and specifically our district. And I am on one accord with you, looking for the opportunity for our high school graduation, prom, eighth grade, morning, and so forth. If we can look at additional things that's kind of a life opportunity for our students, you know, sports for our seniors more so. If we can look for opportunities to do virtual settings in some manner or acknowledgement in some manner, I would greatly appreciate it. So not just those three or four that you named, but any one other opportunities you can do for those people that I just mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
I had just, that's not so much a question, but a concern in regards to the letter that went out on social media. And I understand the need to get the information out as quickly as possible. But I think that we should have thought a little bit better in the way that's like one of the most important things that a parent in a community looks forward to. And that some type of formalized letter should have gone out to the households. It's almost like finding out that your loved one has died on social media for me. And so I think that a formal letter, not something placed on the high school's social media account, that should have gone out to the parents and households of graduates. Because if it was me, I would not take too kindly to that. And I think that even in retrospect, that we should send a formal document out to those who have graduates within our district.
Ms. Mitchell, I was planning to send a letter out from me tomorrow. Because we had talked about having Ms. Trish send a letter through the emails to parents. But we had thought maybe if I could send something that covers everything. You know, is that, is that kind of what you're thinking as well?
Yeah, I think so. Dr. Kara, I think that that would be the most appropriate thing. And especially in light of the feedback that we're getting back and, you know, the fact that we've got a child out there that found out on social media. That, you know, and then I don't want to belabor it, but I just would ask if we could have a formal, more formal process to notify.
Yes, and we agree. I, I think, you know, we want to set that out and we want to do it quickly. I wanted to talk with the board first and also let the community know from, from my perspective, what we're thinking and these challenging decisions. And even the discussion about canceling versus the postponing, what, what difference and what are the risks? So we wanted to make sure that we got to you today to share this and that I will send a personal letter out to the middle school as well as the high school tomorrow.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Kara.
Thank you.
I do have a question. So I completely, you know, understand we're in uncertain times and that we, you know, would like to do something for our seniors, of course. But I don't want to say, I just want to understand, we're not saying that we can't postpone it. Can we, can we keep it as a possibility? I know other school districts are talking about trying to plan it, even if it's down the road in August, trying to do something for our seniors. Are we saying it's completely not an option, that we just need to go the virtual route? Or can we at least try to keep that as an open option?
Anything's possible. I think, but my main concern was trying to at least do something virtually so that if we didn't open in June, July, or even August, they would have gotten
Something. Yeah, I agree with that. I would love to see them actually be able to have a prom graduation. It is really a rite of passage for these kids and it's heartbreaking, you know? I can't imagine as a, as a senior, as the parents, everything. So I would really like to hope that we can at least maybe try to think of post, not doing that virtually, but also consider something down the line if things do open up and we're able to do that.
Right. And I think we all want that. We, we feel terrible for our, our students here and our families. And that would be ideal.
Okay, thank you.
Coglinis? Pardon me for interrupting. The letter that you plan to send out tomorrow, is that going to just senior class members?
It's going to go to the whole high school.
Okay, thank you.
And it's going to, we're going to be sending something out to the middle school as well, a different letter, letting them know that we are going to cancel eighth grade graduation. However, we're going to have an alternative social day planned to replace that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, all right. In just a few minutes, we're going to have each of the department heads share some information. Then what I've asked them to do is to go ahead and sign off after they're, they present. The only people that will be staying on the screen will be those that will be discussing information later such as Ken, I think HR, and I think in curriculum. That way we don't have so many screens open. They'll still be listening, but they won't have a screen open. So anyway, so if you see them click off, you'll know, you know, that is the reason for that. Okay? All right, Dr. Clark, I'm going to let you go next. Talk about district affairs and registration. That's the other big question that's coming up.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So I've been working with the registration and McKinny Vento liaison regarding strictly online registration for everyone. And I've also been working with the curriculum department for CSK and kindergarten registration. So where we are right now, we're almost done putting everything online so that people, the parents can just go in and access that information. Thank you to IT, Eric and his team. They were able to put something in place so that when parents begin to call, that we can actually answer those calls via our computer system. And we can kind of walk them through that registration process. So just like last year, we have to get everything set up. We have to test it to make sure that we work out all the kinks and then we're going to go live with that. What we have discussed is May 26 through June 3 are the dates that we want to have for kindergarten registration. And then our continued registration for everyone else would be July 6 through July 24. And so what we're just trying to make sure that we are able to do is take care of those families that we know will have problems with that online process, just like they did last year. Last year, they were able to walk in and because they can't do that now, we just wanted to set something up so we can do something like this to walk them through that process. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. I know later on the agenda, we have CSK policy and kindergarten lottery. So are you addressing that or do we have, we don't have a plan for that yet, right?
CNI is going to address that. It's just going to be a temporary change because of the way we have to do the enrollment this year.
So I asked, I, I looked back at our enrollment reports and I know that several years ago, we had 50 enrolled in kindergarten CSK, then 46, then 49. In the last two years, our numbers have dropped pretty far off. What number do we have to hit before we hit a lottery? Or does pretty much, if it's under 50, everybody that signs up gets accepted into CSK?
I'll let CNI address that.
Okay. I didn't know if we had a number that was, you know, just like, you know, I know there's two kindergarten classes. I didn't know if we had a certain number of kids that we had to hit. Would it be better to hold that off, that discussion off until?
Yeah, we can.
We can. Okay.
Any other questions?
I have one, Dr. Clark. This is Janine.
Hi.
Hi. Last year, we were able to let people come in and use computers because they do not have a computer. So us walking them through that in a situation like this isn't going to work if they don't have a computer. Have we addressed the need for that or is there a way to address the need for that?
So we've been trying to figure out how we can go about doing that. And so we have three, I'm sorry, two things that we can do. We can help them. They can give us information and we can keep the information in. But eventually they're still going to have to upload documents to us. And then the other piece that is, is to do a temporary registration and then when we get back completed, we'd rather do the, the first one, which is just walk them through it. And then some kind of way they have to get documents to us, even if they have to mail it to us.
Okay, great. I wanted to make sure because I know we, we helped a lot of people in-house last year with our computers. So I wanted to make sure that possibly, if at all, we could have another situation where we could help them.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that Eric worked very, very hard on, making sure we had access to all of that. So we have Carmen, Karen, myself, as well as Jennifer, that will be able to assist families.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Dr. Clark.
Thank you.
All right, Laura, are you doing?
John Tell is going to do the remote learning and Laura will give some data on the attendance and talk about CSK and the lottery change later.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. We would like to start off by saying thank you to, our staff has been great through this remote learning process. Our tech team, our tech coaches, teachers, admin, and our students and families. We have had the distinction between e-learning plan and the remote learning plan. And so the e-learning plan was meant to be served as a short-term temporary emergency, which required five hours of instruction. We had this plan approved by the board on March 17. This is what was implemented for the nine days we were first out of school. It was the plan in place from March 17 to the 27. On March 27, ISB designated days beginning on March 31 as remote learning days. 201U started our remote learning days on April 7. ISB provided the recommendation for designing remote learning plan, which we did put in place. We used the recommendation plus feedback we gathered from our parents from thought exchange and our conversations with teachers and admin to provide routines and structures, keep learning time and activities to a manageable level and to ensure opportunities for interaction happen between teachers and students. The ISB guidelines recommended that we focus on learning with the idea of supporting learning with continuity of education. The student engagement using recommended amount of time for each grade level and the consistency of having a daily plan. A mix of real-time recorded and independent time provided flexibility to both students and families and to use learning platforms as Google Classroom and Google Meets. Using a learning platform that our teachers had already been trained in was very supportive for us. We monitor student attendance based on participation to make sure students are engaged daily, not just by class, but as academic and making sure that we are checking on the well-being of our students. Making sure that our teachers and admins are having contact with our students and families. Using a grading structure that does not academically harm the students, giving feedback using a pass or incomplete, using third quarter grades or incomplete. Focusing on the social emotional experiences, relationships and connections was very important to our families and to our students. Again, like Dr. Kara said, making sure there was that connection because our students really miss their teachers. Emphasizing homeschool partnerships and communication. We believe our plan addressed all of these areas. The board was provided copies of the plans that were decided, designed, I'm sorry, by grade level, pre-K, elementary, middle and high school. And family information is posted on our remote learning website. ISB also provided schools with five remote planning days. We used our first two on Monday and Tuesday of last week before we launched remote learning on Wednesday, the 8. Our next planning day is tomorrow. So teachers and admins will be in meetings and trainings to look at the work that will take us to our current end of closure that we have and make any revisions that will go through the end of that period. This gives our teachers time to reflect on implementation and make the necessary adjustments. We will use our remaining two days once we know where we are going. If we will return on May 1 or if the closure will be any longer. Everything seems to be going well. Teachers are engaging with students. Our students are very happy. You know, we've heard all of the success from having the virtual classrooms and their excitement around the, seeing their teachers. Our next focus was on issuing Chromebooks to our kindergarten students who were in need of devices. And our tech team has been doing a great job this week, making sure that we got devices into those families' hands. And Laura, I'll let you talk about the attendance track.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Attendance is not, I think, what we traditionally think of as attendance. So we're, you know, we're, we're trying to make sure we're having contact with students, that students are participating in our learning plan. Our sixth through 12th grade students, we're asking them to fill out an attendance form every morning. And that kind of gives us an idea that they're there. And then as they engage with their varying teachers throughout the day, those teachers are also making sure that students are participating in those classes. And when that's all done, what we're doing the following day is then collecting all the information on whether or not at least somebody has had contact with students. We know that we have students, that our high school students that may have jobs. We know that we have families that are under some stress during this time. And, you know, just because the reading class or the English class is happening at 10 o'clock in the morning, that doesn't necessarily mean that our students are actually attending then. Because we may have recorded the lesson and they may get to it at 5 o'clock in the evening. So what we're trying to do is throughout the whole day and into the evening, we're coming back the next day and then we're able to see who's engaged the day before and we're using that to measure attendance. So what we've asked our schools to do is to monitor kind of that participation attendance over the course of an entire like 20, 24-hour period. And our first, the first metric, I And, um, our first, um, the first metric I think that we're using for these first four days is, do we have any students where, that we are, we are unable to connect with? And that, and that's the data that we've collected over the first four days. How many students do we have that are out there that are, have missed three or four of these days out of the first four? And, um, right now, everybody, if I ex, I'm going to exclude the high school right now. They're having some challenges, having almost 1,500 students determining whether or not we, how many students we actually have not had contact with. Because we have so many classes and so many teachers and some classes are, um, a mixture of grade levels. So they're still working on their numbers. But everything pre-K through eight, right now, um, we're at about 90%. And, um, so I'm, I'm pretty pleased with that. And we're going to continue to do this every Tuesday now. Where we have a, a Google Doc going and we're asking each school by Tuesday at 3 o'clock to report those numbers to us for the previous week. Um, and we'll continue to give you updates in our weekly FYI.
So Laura, I have a question.
Sure.
With 10% of kids, what happened, what do we, what, what happens to those kids and how do we, like, what happened?
So, so what we've asked the schools to do is first identify those students. And then, um, the first, kind of the first thing that happens is just like on a normal school day. If I'm the teacher and I haven't heard from you today, I'm going to, I'm going to make that initial contact. But if it goes to three, when it gets up to three days, what we've asked the schools to do is to take the list of students and now kind of ramp it up so that the admins, guidance counselors, social workers, you know, kind of the all hands on deck approach and get those other people starting to reach out. And then, um, Dr. Clark, we've been talking to her about this. Then what we'll do is send a letter to the families, trying to engage them. And then we'll rely on now our, our truancy specialists to kind of help us out with this one in terms of intervening so that, um, we can reach out to these families and hopefully make some contact. So we do have that process.
Are there grades affected at all? If, 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 if 4% of the students don't show up for the rest of the year, what happens? Anything?
Right now, if it, it depends on the grade band, but K2, we're simply giving feedback. Um, and then when we hit grades three through eight, it's either a pass or an incomplete. If it's an incomplete, what we're working on now are putting structures in place this summer so that students can, um, either remotely or in person, depending on what society is like at that time. You know, give them the opportunity to go in and, and make up that work. And then for our high school students, um, right now their semester grade is their third quarter grade. So the, as John Tell said, part of what the recommendation is that, and none of this can do academic harm to students. So third quarter grades are the last grades. We got really lucky on this because our third quarter ended the Friday before this all happened. So we know that they all have third quarter grades. And through this pass process, if they can, if they, if they can, uh, pass the work, the graded work, not all work is graded, but if they can get passing marks on whatever is turned in that's graded, then that third quarter grade will remain in effect. And if they do well on those assignments that are graded, they can actually raise the grade up. So again, with that idea of no harm.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks.
All right, Natalie Nash, are you ready to go next?
I saw her.
We can hear you.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? I, I, what am I saying here? Okay. So here's what I know. What I know is that we've been working hard. And when I say we, all of us have been working, um, together to just make sure that messaging is getting out there to parents. Um, I've been trying to offer a lot of support to, um, all the assistant suits in helping to share developments and information coming from their department. We seem to have, we're really gaining momentum on Facebook following us, which means people are, to then tell our own story and we're able to share. And I'm also trying to make sure that the website is constantly being updated every day, that we are adding new, uh, information to our COVID-19 updates. Dr. Kara, each time she issues a new statement or, uh, we do, and we, we get new information from the governor. We try and keep that, uh, up to date so that it can become sort of a repository for people to find, um, the most up-to-date information. So right now, we're also trying to work on sharing information. I'm working with Dr. Clark to share information about, uh, kindergarten registration. I'm also getting a lot of, um, questions on Facebook. Parents and community are, uh, inboxing with questions. So every day I go in and I'm trying to keep, um, answering their questions and some of these issues and trying to, uh, ensure that we are, um, up to date and accurate. So that's, that's most of my work these days is really just making sure that messaging is happening quickly and, uh, and accurately.
Okay. Any questions for her? All right. Thank you, Natalie. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to IT. Mr. Bertram?
Hi, good evening. Uh, sorry, I've kind of gone dark here, uh, sun going down. We have Chromebooks in the hands of every student from first to 12th grade now. And this week we're working on getting Chromebooks to the kindergarteners that did not have a device at home. Uh, it looks like that's going to extend it to next week as well. With that many devices out there, of course, we're going to have some issues here and there. We're not fixing devices, um, right now that can't be fixed remotely. Uh, we set up a swap station that's very near Pam's operation. And we have at least one tech, usually it's just one though, come in each day. And we're just swapping out devices. We'll repair them, uh, at some later date. But at this point, we're just swapping out the problem devices or chargers, that kind of thing. And it's by appointment only. Right now, this week, the kindergartners are picking up their devices by appointment from 9:00 to 10:00 AM. And then, uh, other swaps, uh, for devices with issues are done between, uh, 10:00 and 11:00 AM. We do still have the health desk column. Uh, they can be reached at the same health desk number, uh, between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. And they've been doing a phenomenal job. They feel hundreds, uh, of requests. Most of what they, uh, they're able to, to fix most issues remotely and get, uh, the students and staff back working on the devices that they have at all. Uh, I'm just immensely proud of the job my crew has done. This meeting that we're all in being one of them. Uh, one of the things we've tackled and that credit goes to Don Runner for taking a lot of moving pieces and putting them together so that we can broadcast this on YouTube to the public. So I want to, I want to give Don a big shout out. Things keep evolving. We keep, uh, receiving requests. And, yeah, I don't, I don't just discount anything anymore because I'm just amazed at what we're able to do remotely. When we really have to get it done. So this has advanced our staff and our knowledge and our creativity leaps and bounds. So I want to thank Ken also for giving us a little bit of latitude in the way we're doing a few things. That's really about all I have. Uh, I've talked to most of you this week, but if any of you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to field them.
Great. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
Okay, Mrs. Pansa, Pam Pansa, talk about food service.
You're on mute, Pam.
I was trying. Hello, everybody. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank my staff for doing a tremendous job of helping me get all these meals served. Uh, it's been a challenge, but they're up for the challenge. I've only had two staff members that are a little leery about coming in, but the rest of them have been super. I think it's the way that when they come in the door, we go through quite a few, uh, safety precautions. And I think they're all so very comfortable with what we're doing. So, um, kudos to them. They've been phenomenal. Um, I'd also like to thank the board members and staff members that stopped by to say hi. Couple of people have brought us water, donuts, and, um, we even received some thank you notes from students. So we're really, um, we feel appreciated being out there. So I do thank you all for your support. Uh, we have served over 11,000 meals so far, which is phenomenal. We, uh, applied for a bonus, um, which instead of breakfast, we normally get reimbursement for 224. We're getting reimbursed 233, starting in April. And then for lunches, we normally were reimbursed per meal, 354. And it's going to be 409. So, um, that's something that I, is going to impact us quite a bit. Um, I did last month's based off of, uh, what our numbers were from last month. And, uh, we could be about $1,900 more just by getting that extra money. So it's going to help a little bit. Um, another thing we had going is, uh, we did the pantry, which we served, um, 122 families. With that, there's 222, um, students, which were 18 and under. So we fed 337 and out of that, I should have said, was 222 or 18 and under, which is phenomenal. I want to thank Janine and Bill for coming and helping out, which they busted their butts. So I thank you. It was, it was a very nice turnout. And I believe that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
I just, I just wanted to, I did stop by a couple of times, Pam, and thank just, uh, and, um, thank you for the great job that you've been doing out there. So I did want you to know that I did stop in and talk.
Yeah, thank you.
And Pam, as I said before, you and your team are the shining star in the warrior galaxy. So, you know, uh, keep shining brightly. You guys are doing a great job.
You're welcome. We have a lot of help from people around us. So, yeah, thank you.
Pam, I do have a comment to make and that is that I have been contacted by many community members that were so, are thankful every day that you're there and they were so thankful about the Unity Kitchen and that we were able to, when we ran out of food, literally go and pick your shelves clean and help about, what, 50 more families by doing that? So they knew that and they were very appreciative. And I've, I've heard from many people who just said they couldn't believe how hard we were working to help the community. And I just, I want to let you know that there are a lot of people saying thank you to this district for the IT, for the food, for everything, that the district is really reaching out to the community and being a solid place. And you above all, with the breakfast and lunch are making a huge difference in our community. So thank you.
You're welcome. That's why I do what I do. Thank you.
All right. Last up is Keith McLean. There you are.
Uh, Dr. I apologize. So this is Mr. Brown. Just want to make one last comment to Pam. And I know she had a lot of parents. I heard quite a few board members talk about parents. Say what a good job Pam has done. And I do echo those comments. Even in the midst of some negative comments that came from some parents out there in the field. To me, those problems was quickly rectified by our superintendent Pam. So I really, really commend the team for doing such an excellent job. And I did do a drive-by, but it wasn't to get any, to get any food to obtain my computer, my Chromebook. And I appreciate the team with work. It's a good job.
Thank you.
And the only, which it ends, I wish it ends. But that means if you guys are not doing it, we out of this man, this story with this coronavirus.
Um, just to let you all know that we have a community member in University Park, thanks to Mr. Brown, that started off, um, she kind of pre-orders meals from students. And she comes and picks up Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And she originally started with 30 meals. She's now up to 75. Um, and she's a trustee in University Park. And also one of my staff members goes, so we have a food service person with her. So we're reaching out into that. So kudos to Mr. Brown for, um, having her lead the way of trying to get more people out there to get food.
Excellent.
Keith, you're up.
Well, I, I want to give a shout out to the custodial staff as well because, you know, while all the buildings are currently shuttered, except for ELC, you know, in the food service distribution areas, it took a great deal of custodial teamwork to get all the spaces sanitized and disinfected. Uh, especially keeping in mind that some of them were scared to leave their homes due to the, uh, you know, with the coronavirus unknown, uh, especially in the very beginning. We were lucky enough to, uh, had an in-service, uh, regarding our protocols and pandemic and, uh, pandemic and outbreak cleaning protocols. We had done that just, just before this all broke loose. So our, our staff was pretty well, uh, informed on what they had to do. Uh, all the trainings included our product-specific, um, you know, there were product-specific trainers for us. So our, our disinfectants were used in the training and our sanitizers and virus sites were used in the training. Uh, it was very timely. Um, and, uh, and then our processes, the processes are pretty much the same across the board. When you look at the CDC or EPA, everybody's cleaning guidelines are really the same. So, um, having that training along with the, uh, standards of the, especially the CDC, we use the CDC a lot. That worked out well for our staff. So they were able to hit the road running. And, and looking, you know, forward to the reopening of schools. So Ken and I are currently investigating a, a grand possibility. And it, what we're talking about right now is we would do another deep cleaning prior to, uh, the kids coming back to school, prior, prior to reoccupancy. Um, we, we've got, I'm out for prices right now. Um, it doesn't say the companies are just coming out of the woodwork. Just about every company that used to do something now is a, is a cleanup company. So, uh, but we've got a relationship with SerPro. We have a relationship with our, our environmental company got into the business. And, uh, what I've done is created a list of the different services we're interested in and we're letting people give us line item pricing. And, uh, you know, we're trying to do it to where we can get an apples-to-apples comparison because everybody doesn't clean the same. So we've pretty much told them what we want. Uh, there's still questions because they can't get into the building to see some of the stuff. So, so, uh, we're doing a little back and forth, but I think we're going to have some good prices if this grand opportunity comes through, um, to re-clean the buildings prior to a student reoccupancy. Um, I'd, I'd like, need to say, give a shout out to the maintenance crew. They're still leaving their homes every morning to come in. Uh, the majority of them anyway, uh, to make sure that emergencies are handled and, uh, timely items related to relocation of our operations are handled. So needless to say, that's, that's going to, that keeps moving forward regardless of coronavirus or anything else. So I still have the maintenance guys in, uh, still prepping for that.
Great. Thank you, Keith.
All right.
All right. I've got just one other comment before we leave regarding some updates. Just wanted to let, uh, the rest of the boarding community know that, uh, you, the Village of University Park had contacted me about, um, getting our support in using our high school to conduct the University Park Food Drive. And that is on April 24th and it's going to be at the high school in our east parking lot. And I know several of the board members, um, will be participating. Um, I am coming. I'm bringing my husband along too. He's going to be coming. Uh, it's going to be all day. And they've done one before and they've had, uh, quite a bit of participation. It went very, very well. And so, uh, there was interest in running another one. So that will be coming at the end of this month. So just wanted people to know about that.
Is that the 24th or 28th?
I have the 28th marked. It's a Tuesday.
All right. Well, let me double check that. My calendar I was looking at said the 24th. So let me verify that date.
Sounds good.
Dr. Kara, is that, is it a food drive or a food distribution?
It's district, it's a, uh, like a food pantry, but they're calling it a food drive.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So, um, I'll need to verify that date. Um, so Terry, I'll get that correct date for you for the minutes.
Thank you.
Kara, I have the email up that you sent to us and it is April 28th from 11:00 to 1:30 and then 3:00 to 5:00.
Okay.
Right, yep.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have two dates apparently down, so I'll take that one.
Okay. Okay. Is this, is this the University Park Village, or is it, is Village of University Park?
Yes, but there's a lot of other participants, but it is, I think, the Village.
They're organizing it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I see a couple other, we'll have a few people out there. If you've not done so, just email me your interest, and let me know if you want to do morning, afternoon, or all day, and then I can let them know, because they're gonna be organizing a little bit of a training before you actually get to that date, okay? All right, I think we're ready to move on to business. So I think, you know, Ken will be up, but the first item on the business is the demolition of the dome. So I know that's been a discussion item on there for several weeks. And you know, these are some interesting times we have right now with a lot of decisions. We've had some recommendations from the facility committee, and yet we've also have spent some time revisiting the concept and the idea. I wanted to throw that out to board members at this point. Any thoughts or discussion at this point in time?
Yeah, do you mind if I jump in?
Yes.
I reached out to the, to my other six board members and just kind of shared some thoughts with them, because we have so many unknowns out there. And with what's going on, I know we approved in February the demolition of the sixth grade center, and I know next week we're talking about the demolition of the dome. And I know we have the facility committee and the finance committee. The only thing I shared with, with the other six is that I think at this time, I understand, you know, there's, there's stuff, I'm not here to tell, you know, to sway everybody to save the dome. Everybody knows my feeling on that, and we're at, but I think the cost and the money that we spend on that is, is, I think we should save, just because we don't know what the future holds. I mean, exactly the prom issue and graduation, I don't think anybody here, we don't have any answers. And going into the next fiscal year, I know Governor Pritzker said that the schools are gonna get their money and they're gonna be funded, but how do we know that that's gonna happen when we know that unemployment in the last two weeks has skyrocketed to, I think, all-time highs? So I just shared some thoughts that I think at this time, maybe we should suspend the facility and finance committees for now. And obviously, we voted on the sixth grade center, but if we just hold off on all that stuff until a future date, just because if it costs us, as an example, fifty thousand to keep the sixth grade or the dome just with the water and electric on, but it's gonna cost one point three million to demo them, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, I think at this point, in this juncture, we probably need to keep as much money in our accounts as possible, because we don't know what the future's gonna hold, and if the state of Illinois is gonna pay us.
We do, Bill, and I'll agree with you, I think, you know, there is some uncertainty in the future. I'm not worried about this year, but, you know, I'm worried about next year on some revenue streams. I've been reading in that, they're not certain, but I think they're gonna happen, there might be some delay in people paying property taxes, which is gonna be a delay in us getting some revenue in the future. There are some concerns, like you mentioned, about school funding. So, you know, and again, just using some common sense, I just saw an article today where I think the state has paid a hundred and eighty-five million dollars in some just supplies for, to fight COVID-nineteen, so where they're coming up with that money, I don't know. You know, and that, so there is some uncertainty. But the other side of this, and this is something I want to share with the board, the other side of this now becomes our life safety issues. That has been dragging on for years, and, you know, I will say this, I believe it's becoming, gonna become a liability issue, it's been dragging on for seven years now.
Real quick, just to interrupt, last week I talked to Dr. Kara.
Yes.
And then as I reached out to the other six board members, I did express that I think at this time, we go with the bare minimum life safety issues to satisfy the state. We have to do that. I don't think we can avoid any of that. But what I'm saying is, I know that we originally went out, and I'm just gonna throw a ballpark of a hundred million, right? We all know that at this time, our four communities are struggling right now, possibly with jobs, unemployment, with fund, I mean, even last Wednesday, when I was, I was honored to be part of the food pantry, we serviced twice as many people as normally get serviced.
Right.
So we already can see it happening, but I just don't know that going to a referendum and doing all that other stuff, I think all that goes on a hold, but I think we should, for sure, finish the life safety, the bare minimum, just to get the state satisfied. That's just my
And Bill, I agree with you one hundred percent on that, on those thoughts too. I don't think now is the right time to do that. I've thrown some numbers together, I could share those with the board on doing the life safety, also doing climate control in our buildings, quite honestly, as a bare minimum. I've looked at those two things, I've had the architect look at that, because what happens when you're gonna do some HVAC work, there are some other works, and I'll give you an example, at Crete, in order to do HVAC and put an air conditioning, we gotta upgrade the electricity there, because it doesn't have the power to do it. So there's those type of things in that. Now, I can share that out, Dr. Kara, and I can share that out, I've got some estimated costs. From a financing standpoint, to be honest with the board, I haven't contacted PMA yet, because I wanted to get your flavor and kind of have this discussion, Bill. And then I'm gonna go to them to see if there is a way we can finance this, and at the same time, lower our annual debt payment too, which would save the taxpayers.
Well, that, that was the question we discussed, we talked to Dr. Kara and I a little bit last week, is that you were talking about restructuring the debt payment to obviously hopefully help the taxpayers alleviate pressure from them.
Right, exactly, so I want to have those discussions with them, you know, and maybe have them put together a couple scenarios, and I can get that done pretty quickly. We're in a situation right now, I'll tell you this, even with life safety things, we wouldn't be able to start those until next summer, actually. Because a lot of those things have to be done when kids are not in session. We have to do bid documents and all that stuff, but, you know, the key to this is gonna be the financing, because, you know, we don't have enough in our coffers, nor do we want to spend the money out of our coffers, you know, to do a lot of this, you know. The preliminary number that I have for do the life safety stuff right now is about thirteen point five million dollars. That's with some escalated costs in there over what was presented to the state back in two thousand and thirteen. It also includes some contingency and some fees that are all wrapped up into that stuff too, from a budgetary standpoint, looking at projects.
So
Go ahead.
No, you're right, so that's exactly my point is, we've taken a hundred million and we dropped it down to thirteen point five just to satisfy the state, because, let's be honest, in four to six months, if we're back to normal, we can start up the facility and we can resume everything, because you and I can, we can be honest that the bond market's not gonna change. It's gonna have to remain flat for a little while to allow everybody to get out of this, so money will still be good for a while.
Right.
Let me, let me add, just, let's bring it back just to the dome and the sixth grade center for a second. I mean, recall that our intention was, is to handle that through, pay for that through operating funds with the anticipation that we would reimburse ourselves in a future bond issue. And we, you know, we'd entered into the reimbursement agreement, that's all set, that was our intention. But right now, our request for, to be able to issue thirty-year bonds is sitting in Springfield, this legislator, legislature isn't meeting. So that's going nowhere, so we have no certainty on our ability to issue bonds in the way that we would want to issue bonds in the future right now. So, you know, Ken, I'll defer to you, but I think spending one point, I think would be one point five million dollars for the demolition right now out of operating funds with no certainty to reimburse ourselves, probably isn't the prudent thing to do.
No, and I concur with that, I agree with that one hundred percent, I don't think it is the right thing to do right now, I think we need to sit tight on that. You know, and start looking at some of these other scenarios, and I'll just say, you know, model one, where we kind of look at life safety stuff, and again, I can separate out costs for HVAC and all of that stuff, because I think, you know, that's one of the issues that we're having in a lot of these buildings is our HVAC, even if we don't put air conditioning, and we've got some heating problems in some of our buildings, so kind of addressing that. But I can separate that out, I can look at the financing and have PMA look at the financing for, from a twenty-year amortization schedule versus the thirty-year, you know, because that's an uncertainty too right now.
Right.
It's a good time to borrow money, to be honest with you, I think we all kind of know that, because, you know, rates are way down there, but again, and we want to do this prudently.
And we want to, we want to be completely fiscally responsible that way, for sure, so.
And there's two, and there's two separate sets of bonds that we would use, one would be life safety bonds that we could use for the life safety projects, and the other ones would probably be general obligation bonds that we could use for any type of, you know, other type of remodeling and all of that, so you know, again, I can, we'll have to look, and Terry, you may need to help me on this one, because the board has approved the contract for the demolition of the sixth grade center, so we need to probably rescind that somehow, then. And I don't think we have to do that in a formal motion.
Can we just
I don't know that, that's where I think we need to some advisement on that. Kara, do you know that even?
I don't know that. My opinion on this is that, you know, we've, we were allowed to use it, but it's a matter of us actually setting the date and actually doing it, if we never take action on it, I don't think you need to rescind it.
Okay, all right, well, I'll, let me talk to the architect and the contractor about this whole thing, and that. The other thing I will mention to you, when we start talking about cost to demolition of dome, to demo the dome, and again, I just bring this up, that to demo the dome, we get a credit of fifty-four thousand dollars. So it doesn't cost us anything to demo the dome, I just say that, that that's not a comment in support of demoing it, I just want to make that very clear.
No, I'm with you on that, and I get it, and again, don't get me wrong, I think all the six of them know that my vote is to, my vote is not to keep the dome, right?
Right.
In this time, I think we have to take the chance of the money, because we don't know what the future holds. I mean, like Dr. Kara said earlier, we don't know that we'll be back in school August twentieth or whatever it is. And after June thirtieth, when our, I think that's our fiscal year ends, correct?
Yes.
How is the funding gonna work, if you're right, I mean, people aren't paying rent, because they're being allowed to withhold two months. Taxes probably won't be paid, I mean, we've got some unknown hurdles here that we're just not sure of.
Right, exactly, no, I, and I agree with you, I, I agree with you one hundred percent, Bill, and the rest of the board on this whole thing, so you know, I'll have, I'll have conversations with the contractor and with the architect to suspend that stuff. You know, I'm sure we can do that based on just a letter from me to them, so that's, that's not an issue at all, so I can take care of that right now.
Right, sounds good.
Yeah, well, let me pose this question to the, to the board. Our anticipate, you know, our expectation was that we would have on next week's agenda an action item for demolition of the dome. Should we have, should we keep that on the agenda, or should we leave it off the agenda until we have further facts?
Nelson, before we go that far, I have a specific question for Ken.
Okay.
We have been bouncing this around, back and forth, it's on an agenda, it's off an agenda, and ideas here and ideas there. My feeling is, and I voiced this very strongly to Bill the other day when he called me about doing different things, I agree that this is not the time to spend the money today, but my question is, can we not take a vote next week, one way or the other, whichever it decides, and if it's to demo it, then can't we say it's gonna be in six months or whatever, but that vote is behind us, the decision has been made, and we carry on with life safety or whatever needs to be done? My concern here is, if we vote next week, we get that lower rate. If we don't make a decision, then we have to go out to bid and start all over with the whole process and everything, is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
You are correct, I, here's, I would recommend, I would recommend not to take a vote next week to demo the dome, because what the board actually does is they, they take a vote to award a contract to a person to do something. So again, when you did the sixth grade center, you awarded a contract to a certain company at a certain amount. Now, what I will tell you is this, if we are to postpone this, let's just say six months, and again, I'm not saying this as a support to demo it now, but I'm just saying, if we postpone this for six months, we are gonna go, have to go out to bid, because I'm already getting some pushback from contractors on holding the price.
So my question would be, if we could vote next week, and whichever way it goes, if the vote does go to demo it, could we not, in that contract with the person who has given us the bid for both buildings, could we not say with the demo to begin at a future date or something, or ninety days, ninety to one hundred and eighty days or some, because we're not gonna demo now anyhow, correct?
As much as I would love to
Pay that money, because we know the new price would be much higher, we know that.
Here's, here's what I'm thinking though, Janine, is that, as much as I would love you to do that, I would advise you not to do it, because if you commit yourself then to demoing the dome, your bids are gonna come in pretty high. You know, because they already know you want to do it, so they're just gonna jack up the prices and all that.
I thought we already had a bid for both buildings.
We do, but if you're not, if you're not gonna do it for another future date, I mean, I had, we had trouble holding them to their price now, because
But we can't demo now anyhow, I thought.
Pardon me?
I thought we couldn't demo now anyhow.
No, we can't, but we were holding the price until now, hoping that we were gonna demo start in June, but we're not gonna start in June now to demo any of those facilities.
I thought it was like, I thought the last I heard was it was gonna be fall.
Sure.
You know, I, I mean, I don't, I don't even think we're gonna get to this thing in fall, to be honest with you. I, you know, because, again, we have to see what our revenue streams are gonna be like, and our first big revenue stream doesn't come in until September, October with property taxes. So that'll, that's gonna give us an idea. So I, you know, as much as, and everybody knows my opinion of it too, you know, and, but I would advise the board against that of really taking any action on this. Kara, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but that's just kind of my
Real quick, I think this is exactly like if we're putting an addition on our house right now. Would you put an addition on your house right now if you didn't know you were gonna have your job?
Yeah.
You would kind of want to kind of rally in your finances and figure out where you are, because if this goes on for eight, six, eight, nine months, we gotta have
It's going on for five years, so I, I just am strongly, strongly getting this feeling that we're going backward on this board again, we take two steps forward and we take a step back, and I get what you're saying about money, I, I just, I'm really feeling bad here, guys, and I told you this before, when we delayed this for more information, now we are, here we are in a pickle, I get it, but I don't want to continue to keep backpedaling on decisions we made earlier, and now it comes to a vote and we have to backpedal. And Janine, just, just put it out there, you can like me for it or you cannot like me for it, but I'm of the thought, June twenty-second last year was a turning point for us, and I feel now we're starting to backpedal again, and I'm terrified we're gonna end up in a mess. I do understand the monetary bill, I got it a thousand percent. But again, we're backpedaling, now we don't even know, will we do this, can we do this? I know it's uncertain with coronavirus out, but we still didn't even know if we would have gone with life safety what we were doing. That was an alternate plan that didn't have an endpoint to it either, so we have all these beginnings with no ends, and it's beginning to totally frustrate me as a board member, because it's our job to keep this district moving, to keep it financially sound, and I feel like we're not moving. We've become stagnant again, and we're all, we're all, all over the board again, and that's my, my opinion, and I'm putting it out there because I'm frustrated again. This is not the first decision that we've backpedaled on, and I'm having a hard time with it. But I totally understand what you're talking about, the money, absolutely want to do the right thing for our communities. If we can do something with the taxes, Ken, like you were saying, looking at the debt structure, I get it. But at some point, these decisions have to be made, and now they're gonna cost us more money, so I'm, I'm just voicing my opinion with how I feel things are going. So I'm, I'm just voicing my opinion with how I feel things are going.
Ken, do we know? Your frustration, Janine, but I think that one of the things that I agree with, you know, Nelson and, um, Ken and Bill, in regards to it, there's too many unknown factors right in this moment for us to say that this, I mean, I was prepared to make a decision and, and to do a vote on the dome as well. But, you know, hearing everything and actually thinking over everything as well. Um, I don't think it's in our best interest to make that decision, um, right now when there are so many variables and so many unknown. And all of them would impact us on a financial level. Um, and it's unfortunate that the pandemic, you know, came right in the midst of our movement. But I think that we have to, um, understand even on an emotional level. I know you feel that is backpedaling, but I think that what we're looking to do at this point in time is to be a good steward of our resources. And we can't be a good steward when we're dealing with the unknowns. And, um, I get it. I get your frustration. You know, I think everybody here, um, would like to, you know, be able to make a decision. What dome and people have their own thoughts about the dome. Um, so then, you know, that decision can't for all of the communities concerned and involved in it. But I think that it's bigger than just the dome and, um, what we want. We're dealing with the unknowns. Even the country is dealing with the unknowns. And every promise that has been made has been broken by the people that, you know, hold the purse strings.
Ken, do we know if it is voted on to demolish the dome that we cannot hold that price? I mean, can we check on that to see if that can be held?
Yeah, I can check on it. I, I mean, that isn't an issue. I can check on it. But I will tell you the chances of them holding it are not really good.
Okay.
Because I, I struggled with them holding it now, actually.
I'm just saying, under the pandemic, a lot of people are making exceptions to the rule, you know, their.
Sure.
These are, you know, and late fees aren't discussed and stuff. So I didn't know under the circumstances if they would be willing to, you know, hold that longer. So that might be something we want to check.
Some of that, I can ask them that to find out and, uh, I can let the board know. You know, or at least how, how long out, far out they'll hold that price.
They'll hold that price.
Till August. You know, or September or something like that. So I'll, I'll find that out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, not a problem. Okay, uh, Nelson, I don't think that answered your question though about putting the.
That's what I wanted to find out.
Yeah.
Next week.
Pardon me, Kara?
That's what I'd like to find out for the agenda.
My recommendation would be let's, uh, leave it off the agenda, um, and not force people on an up and down vote. Um, with all the uncertainty, but I can, you know, I'll go with whatever the consensus of the board is.
Okay. Ken, do you think you can get that information if they would hold it with, before we would vote next week?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll try and, um, I'll try and call tomorrow on it and, uh, see if I can get an answer by tomorrow or Thursday.
I think that answer might change some people's feelings.
Yeah, you know, and that's so let me, uh, I, I can get right on it tomorrow morning. And that's.
That would be great. Then I, I, I would say like, my personal opinion is let's hold off and see if Ken can find that information out. And if he can't, then we'll have to make a decision from there. But if he gets an answer, that may make it easier to decide what we're going to do next week.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get an answer and then what I can do is I can get an email out to the board. You know, or Kara can get an email out to, but one, one of us will get the email out to the board and, uh, let you know what that answer is.
Thank you.
You know, it's not a problem.
And then is the board, well, if Kara and I are making a decision then based on that, whether we, uh, how we, how we address it in the agenda next week?
Well, I would say after, after you know that information, you'd have to put it out to the board and then get the consensus.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Hopefully not. Okay, let me go to, uh, the insurance rates and that, uh, some good news here. Uh, as you well know, we have an insurance committee that's comprised of, uh, members of ACME, members of, uh, CMEA. Uh, also two of our board members, Janine and Cheryl serve on that. Uh, with some of the, uh, individuals from central office. Um, and, uh, insurance rates are going to stay the same for next year. Uh, all the way across the board and there are going to be no plan changes at all. So, uh, um, that's some positive news for us and that's some good news for us. Uh, so Janine and Cheryl, I don't know if you wanted to add anything on that, but, uh, just to mention that.
I, I had a quick question on that.
Yeah.
There was on the, on your report, you had 6.6 million spent last year. And this year it was like 3.4 million dollars. So 2018 to 2019 was 6.6 and this year was 3.4. And it looked like the PPO and HMO, they went up, they went up a lot. So can you just, it kind of explain that or unless Cheryl or Janine understand that? Because it said the PPO went up 11.3% and HMO 21.7.
It depended, uh, are you talking about the expenditures, Bill?
Yes.
It was because we had a couple of big cases, um, a couple of employees that had some major illnesses. Um, but looking at the rates this year, Ken, I, I would like you to explain how we got to the point where we decided to hold everything. Um, that we wanted to be able to have our employees not take a hit monetarily. Um, there's a, there's an equation, Ken, help me out here. Is that we should have three months worth of money in reserve? How is this going? Can you please help?
Sure. So we have, we have a, a health account that we have a reserve, uh, for, because we're self-funded. So, uh, all the expenses really come from the district. We're not fully funded. What's called full funders, fully funded and then they're self-funded. So we're self-funded. So the recommendation is always when you're self-funded is basically have six months of reserve of claims, average claims, uh, in the bank. Um, right now, and, and I'm thinking off the top of my head because I don't have that information handy. Um, right now I think we might have about three and a half to four months. That sounds about right, Cheryl and Janine.
Yeah. You said you had 1.5 million in there?
Yeah, there's 1.5 million in there. They're recommending it should be a little over $2 million. That based on our, what our average claims are and all that stuff. So, um, what happened when, so Blue Cross Blue Shield, when we go to them, they're the ones that kind of determine what our rates are and, uh, how we, uh, where our rate should be for the next year. So they actually recommended a, I believe they recommended a 2% decrease. And, yeah, 2.2% decrease in rates. However, the committee said, let's hold a line on that and keep rates constant. And then that extra 2%, we can take and bank is in, in order to build up our reserve for our, uh, health accounts and that to get closer to that six months and everything. So, uh, that's kind of the way it works and all that stuff. Uh, the increases, Janine was saying, uh, there were a, a couple of, of large, you know, uh, bills. Uh, I, I mean, I'll, I'll give you a perfect example. One is myself. You know, and that, that, you know, I went through a couple of surgeries. I had chemo treatments and all of that stuff. Uh, but we also have a, uh, an insurance plan. And, and I forget what it's, I think, I think, I'm trying to think if it's called Stopgap. For what, once the claims hit, uh, I think it's a hundred thousand or 125,000. So my bills get to that, then that insurance kicks in and it doesn't cost the district anymore. But we had, we had a few of those that got to that level. And so that's why there was that increase and all that stuff. Now, again, taking my own personal, uh, situation for next year, you know, that'll back off because I don't have chemotherapy. I don't have, I hope not. I don't have any surgeries or anything like that planned or anything like that. So, so, you know, uh, it'll, it'll help the district then, uh, in the long run and that.
So what they did is they're looking at your experience on the plan, your catastrophic illness. The plan which is, was determining that. And then I think the other thing, do they look at the aging from of your employees on the plan and use that as a determination as well? What can be an expected expense when they're determining it?
I don't know that, Ms. Mitchell. I don't know if they use that as, as part of their actuarial.
Right.
Populations and all that stuff. I know they do some of that, but I'm really not sure of that. Uh, I can find that out though.
Yeah, I think they look and they, they take a look at the aging of your workforce as well and factor on that end. But I'm not, you know, sure.
Yeah.
I know that catastrophic illnesses will drive it, you know?
Sure.
Um, and then they'll look at where that aging population is that may have the potential to drive.
Right. Because that, you know, again, I, I would think the older your, your workforce is, you know, the more likely you are, you know, to, to have some type of illness or something like that, or, you know, uh, and that's why. Uh, I could find that out though, but I'm sure it's part of their actuarial.
I think I mentioned one point by Mary Breg, but I'm not certain. I think when we first started doing this whole committee group, they talked about how they looked at the age and how many were, you know, uh, elderly, shall I say, what they look at 50 or older, they love it. And, um, but families, they really addressed the family issue.
Exactly.
I got to say in a way, I'm kind of glad now that we decided to keep that 2.2 going and not give them a decrease. Because we don't know what's with this pandemic. I don't really know if we have employees. Um, we don't know. That could have really hit us hard also. And then at least we have the money to help and we're not way down in our reserve and have to raise the rates tremendously next year, which is what we always want to not do.
Right.
I think that's how we ended up saying, let's just leave it, everything the way it is. Get a little extra money in there and then we'll be close to our three months and we won't have to worry about a raise in rates.
Yeah. The, the other good news I want to share with the board too is 1-800-M-D. 1-800-M-D is a service that we added last year to our plan. Um, and, you know, there's a cost of $2.48 per member that's getting insurance and all that. Um, but what it does is that you're able to make, uh, it's almost like having a virtual, uh, doctor's appointment, uh, you know, and that. So we started that. They calculated some savings for us and it probably, I'm just looking at the numbers right now. Uh, saved us almost $41,000, uh, in savings by using, uh, 1-800-M-D versus somebody going to the emergency room or someone going to urgent care and all of that. So they're estimating our savings was about $41,000 for last year, which is, which is really good. They, they said to us that we're one of the top users of this, uh, service of all of their clients. And, uh, the rewards are, are really, uh, are, are really helping us. So that's been a, a good thing for our plan too. I know I've personally used it and it's been great, you know, and that too. So, um, I just wanted to share that with the board. So next week, the insurance rates will be coming, uh, approval for the insurance rates will be coming to the board. We know motion, uh, there are no changes in rates or plans from last year, or I should say for this year, uh, from this year. Um, so I don't know if there's any other questions that you may have on that. None here. Okay. I think, uh, the next one I put on here was the audit. I think Kara had mentioned to me, I know I wasn't at the board meeting last, last month or on the board meeting last month. Uh, but she said there might've been some questions on there. She just, she wanted to hold off and put that back on the agenda. So, uh, if some individuals had some questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I had questions and I think I answered my questions in that, um, you know, no, let me just present it back to you. The question, and I know that in the audit, it made recommendation is my understanding that, you know, there were other recommendations made in the last year. And in our audit process, you know, there is, the recommendation should be something that, you know, and I said this to Kara, that we should be using as a measurement for us to make sure that when we get to our auditing processes, this does not present itself as an issue, uh, whether it's staff knowledge. Um, you know, things that need to be put in place to make sure that it, um, maintains the integrity of our processes um, as well. And so that was my concern because there were a couple of recommendations that were made that I think that we should adapt the recommendations and use it as a benchmark to make sure that we do not see ourselves or present ourselves in the same light, um, in this auditing year.
I, and I agree with you 100%. I, you know, and I, I will share this with the board that, um, I have, I have done some personal work on this, uh, on this audit as I prepare for next year. Uh, I think everyone knows that one of the big things was this whole bank reconciliation situation, uh, that was going on. Um, I have personally met with, uh, I've, I've had Skyward in onsite for three full days. Out of those three days, I've met with them on one day on bank reconciliations. I've also had additional five days of web access with them to try and get this taken care of. Uh, I think you'll see also from the personnel report that Lala will be presenting uh, about the hiring of an assistant business manager with a strong accounting background. Uh, and so, uh, you'll see that, uh, as a way to prevent that from occurring in the future. Uh, my goal is to take care of all of these findings this year. Um, and, uh, so they don't present themselves. But I, I agree with you, Ms. Mitchell, 100%.
Ken, what I recommend is, you know, how we've had a standing old business item this year.
Sure.
Bus discipline, bus behavior.
Yeah.
We can probably take that off at this point, at least for the rest of the school year. But I would suggest we have a standing, um, old, old business item just to get an update on the reconciliation of accounts.
Sure.
Once a month.
Sure. That's not a problem. Like, you can take care of that. Yep.
So, so Ken, this is Mr. Brown.
Hi.
So, and you, hello, in your document for justification and all of that that you put on in the board packet tonight, you put down the final order 2018, 2019 fiscal year that we had issues with reconciling our, our bank, uh, statements and so on and so forth. And you said you put an action plan in. So is it fair to say that we do not have any issues right now? If you take a snapshot with reconciliation?
Um, I don't think that's a fair statement. We do have some issues and the issues are, and I, and I will tell you what the issues are. And I'm going to say this very bluntly. There is no evidence of any type of fraud or mismanagement or anything like that. Okay? These are all system issues where accounts are not being reconciled in our financial system, which is Skyward. Um, it, they're all, they're all over the place, to be honest with you. Some are being done in Excel. Some are being done in Quicken. Uh, some are being done in Skyward, but not being done the right way. So what I have done, uh, and am doing, I should say, is I'm tearing that whole thing apart so that all accounts beginning July 1 of 19, for the 1920 audit, all accounts will be reconciled in Skyward and that. And, uh, that is my goal and that is what I've been working on, uh, with Skyward. Because there's some, um, there, there are some system issues, not created by Skyward, but created by predecessors of mine. Uh, and other staff that are not there anymore in the business office when it comes to reconciling. I mean, I'll give you an example. There was an account that they started reconciling back in 2017 and then they stopped. And then there's no other reconciliation of that account. But all the transactions are there, but it's never been reconciled. So you're guessing. So it's still, it's those type of things. Uh, so, uh, again, I've taken, I've taken the bull by the horns on this one. And I've gotten involved in it, uh, to the nitty gritty of, uh, transactions and I'll get it right. And my goal, Mr. Brown, right now is to get it right for the 1920 audit.
Of course, coming and support you on trying to find out what exactly is going on and provide recommendations to our district, specifically you and our superintendent to get this under control. So you're basically saying right now, we do not have it under control when it comes to reconciliation. And we do not have a date, uh, basically saying that we are going to get this under control by this date. So you're saying by. So you're saying by next fiscal year, we would have things under control. Is that the date or timeframe that I'm hearing?
Well, what I, what I have told Skyward is this, I want to have the accounts reconciled up through March of two thousand nineteen by the end of April. Okay?
Okay.
That's, that's my goal right now. Uh, can I meet that goal? I don't know, but Skyward is, is, is working with me on this. Uh, you know, and there's, there's just a lot of detail on this stuff of trying to find transactions and trying to, I mean, you know, it's, you know, uh, I'll get, I'll get through it. I'll get through it and I, and I'll get it done. I think what, what will help from a recommendation standpoint is, again, you'll see this on the personnel report. We're going to be bringing somebody in that has a strong accounting background, that's a CPA. Uh, that uh, can assist with this whole process and everything too, you know?
So, but you're suggesting that you would have it resolved with the fiscal twenty twenty audit, which would ordinarily be completed on, on a normal schedule, be completed in November of twenty twenty?
Yes. Yeah. Yes. So all accounts, what, what I've done is that all, I, I'm, I'm working on having all accounts reconciled in Skyward beginning July one of nineteen. So starting in July one nineteen, all accounts will be reconciled in there. Then we start moving forward so that when our auditors look for their cash balance in our bank compared to our book, they'll be able to see that once we finish the June reconciliation. Yes.
So again, you're saying that once you get everything copacetic taken care of by a couple of months from now for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we have, and you know, you have necessary tools that you need, that we should not see this problem again.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I can confidently, I can confidently say that.
Okay, that's all I need. Thank you, sir.
Yep, you bet.
Okay. Any other questions for Ken or can we move on to curriculum?
Thanks, Lord. I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
You bet. I'll be here still.
Okay.
Okay, Laura, you're up to talk about C S K policy.
Okay. Um, I think I'm going to start answering Bill's earlier question, um, as we lead into this.
Laura, could you repeat Bill's question?
Bill's question was, how many kindergarteners do we need before we have a lottery? I think that was, that was your question. So, um, C S K has two sections of kindergarten. Uh, twenty five is the cap on those two sections, so a max of fifty students. Um, we start filling those fifty spots with our family admissions students. So again, the policy is that if, um, if you have a student who is currently enrolled in C S K and you have an incoming kindergartner, that student automatically gets in. They don't go through the application lottery process. So right now, we have twelve of those students who are going to enter C S K through family admissions. So doing the math here, that means we have thirty eight slots that are technically open. Um, what we typically do is we run kindergarten registration in April and then according to the board's C S K policy, we do the kindergarten lottery no later than May fifteenth. So when kindergarten, uh, parents register, their students, they have the opportunity to fill out the kindergarten application for C S K to go into the lottery and then no later than May fifteenth, uh, we run the lottery. Now, as Mr. Smallish pointed out, where our numbers were low the last two years, um, we did not actually have to run a lottery last year because we didn't have enough students to do that. Um, it's hard to predict, um, whether we're going to need a lottery or not. So earlier, Dr. Clark talked about running an online kindergarten registration from May twenty sixth through June third. And then we would hold the kindergarten lottery, um, if we need to, uh, on no later than June fifteenth. This is technically a change to your policy. Um, but what I wanted to know is, do, does the board then need next week? If this is the way, if this is the route we're going to go in changing the, the date of the lottery, does the board then need to approve a temporary change for this year because it is different in the policy, given these crazy circumstances that we have, um, rather than, you know, make an exception to the policy, rather than actually change the policy?
Well, I, I guess my thought is, I think we just, instead of changing the policy, I think we do it in, I don't know what would it be called, doing addendum for sure, because this year is different than every other one we've had. And again, just to clarify, you only do a lottery if you have more than fifty kids apply for that kindergarten, right?
Right. So if it, right now, let's just take our current scenario. We need, if we have more than thirty, if we have more than thirty eight parents of incoming kindergarteners that want their children to go to C S K, we would hold a lottery to pick the thirty eight students that we would use to fill the slots. If we have less than thirty eight, then we wouldn't run it because we would have enough to fill the open positions.
Right. And I think we could just do a number of the policy for this year. Take some action as opposed to rewriting the policy.
I agree.
So next, next week, we'll bring an action report to, uh, change the, the lottery, the, the let, the, the lottery date, for lack of a better, better phrasing, uh, for this year only, just due to circumstances. And then you'll vote on it and then we'll be good to go holding it after we do our kindergarten registration.
Uh, Dr. Kara, me being the policy person, I agree that what we want to do is figure out a way to fix it for this year. But I think we better make sure with either press plus or our attorney that we do it correctly because you have a policy in place. I'm not quite sure how you do it just for this one year. So we need to make sure that we check with somebody. So whatever we do is the correct way to do it just for this one time of, um, issue.
Yeah, I can check into that with Bill.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we'd be press plus could help you or just somebody to make sure we're doing it right.
Press plus cannot, because this is an individual customized policy for us because of C S K.
Well, it's not really, we're, we're going to make a change, a minor change or an addendum or whatever. So it's not really changing the policy. So somebody, just so that we make sure we're doing it the correct way, so that it's only valid for this one time and that our other policy stays in effect for the future.
Okay, I'll find that out and let you guys know in my F Y I.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Laura?
All right, thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up for human resources, um, I wanted to have, uh, the board, uh, consider um, taking a look at raises for the non-union as well as the administration. Last time we talked, I know that there was some interest in perhaps looking at these groups separately. Um, so we did prepare, uh, some thoughts on that for you and I'm going to turn this over to Lyle at this point.
Well, good evening. Um, what I have provided in board book for you, um, were some calculations based on uh, a split increase. Uh, I believe last year we had a discussion or actually probably earlier this school year, we had a discussion about coming back in April with an increase that considered non-union employees, uh, non-administrative employees a little differently than administrative employees and primarily due to the difference in salaries between the two groups. And so, uh, Dr. Kara had asked me to put together some calculations for you uh, for an increase of three percent for non-administrative, non-union employees, which would match up with the, uh, some of the other increases that our contractual employees are getting, uh, through their union contracts. And a C P I increase, uh, for administrative employees, which would be two point three percent for this year. If you look at, I believe it's page three forty one in your documents, some of the numbers on page three forty might look a little misleading until you look at this page. Um, the total cost of those two increases would, would be two hundred thirty six thousand, three hundred eighty six dollars and eighty three cents over, uh, the twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty salaries, uh, for the, for these three employee, employee groups. However, when we factor out some reductions in, uh, administrative costs as well as the elimination of a financial position. And, and.
I think Lyle froze up.
He's getting to the good stuff.
Oh, boy, did we lose Lyle?
Yeah.
He'll probably log back in. I think he did.
When you look at page, when you look at page three forty, that's, that, that hopefully that three forty one kind of explains those numbers.
Well, I, 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 I think we're mixing apples and oranges here because you've already presented the elimination of a position and reduction in some of this in our staffing plan. I think a better presentation here would be to take the staff that that's currently on the books and being retained, showing the percentage increase just in that population. You, you, you're not going to provide increases to any new hires, i.e. the, you know, the assistant, uh, uh, business manager. Uh, because I found this very misleading and I thought, I kind of felt like you were double dipping on something you'd already shown the board. So a little misleading.
And I agree there because I'm not really sure of it with the increases you can utilize the positions that were eliminated because I know where we're going to talk about a new, uh, assistant with Ken, right? The, with the CPA? So we're.
Yes, that's not, that wasn't necessarily an administrative position. Uh, and I believe that went under the, uh, the yellow section there. So that's already factored in.
But you're not providing him a, a salary increase. You're just hiring him and bringing him in. So I think you need to look at.
Correct.
Comparison of just the staff that are currently on the books and those with, and the intention of those that will be retained. And I think it'd be a clearer picture of what are the true increases to the budget.
Yes.
Well, the true, the, the true increase is that two hundred thirty six thousand, three hundred eighty six dollar amount. That's the true increase. And it, it is represented here, like you said, that, you know, this, this was meant to be just a global view. Uh, I certainly can present it in any way you, you want to look at. We're, we're not trying to hide anything whatsoever. Um, what, what I will say is it, it will come out roughly to a three percent, uh, increase for the uh, orange and blue group and then for the administrative group, roughly a two point three percent increase. But I will, I will go ahead and just have this, the spreadsheet recalculated a little bit for you and, and I can have that for you probably either tomorrow or Thursday.
Okay, that, that is the main point concern I have is I want to make sure the two groups are completely separated. Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Because I think that doesn't even need to even have a committee look at it, um, so that we can take a look and see um, where we were, where we're trying to go, um, with the salaries, um. Because when we get it, it's like, I'm looking at, uh, at this, but it's like you said, Nelson, it needs to have a, a deeper dive. Um, and it should be on the Excel sheet so that we have an understanding and we're able to compare, you know, apples to oranges and to know what we're doing. And I'm not criticizing Lyle. I'm just saying that.
I understand.
Okay, I, I just think that for me, I, I, it, it, it doesn't give me what I'm looking for in order to even, um, make a decision if this is moving in the direction and even all of the moving parts. We're losing people, we're adding people in where we're experiencing a saving on one part because we eliminated department. Um, but then on the other side, we're putting in more positions. And so I, I just want to see where is our real savings? Um, and what we're doing and where the money is supposed to transfer over into curriculum. The other thing that I would, and I may be moving ahead of myself, so Nelson, you can stop me. The other thing that I, you know, because some things, I mean, we've got finance committees, we've got all of these other committees, but we have nothing that, um, tells us even the welfare benefits in the, um, salary structure. All of that probably needs to have eyes on it because even if we look at our structure, and I would also recommend this because we have underutilization. Um, and I asked for the E E O one report. Um, and I'm still going to ask for that again so that I can see the structure of staff. There are places that were underutilized, but we don't have any, um, working document that says how we're going to target recruitment so that we can fill the gap at the administrative level and other levels throughout the district so that it mirrors what our, um, strategy is in terms of diversity, equity and inclusion, um, in our workforce. So that's still a concern of mine. So I'll put it down there. Um, and I would like to see an E E O one, Kara, if that's okay, that I get that report. Um, so that I can take a look at the workforce and see what we look like. Um, but I think that we need to do more targeted recruitment, um, for, um, minority presence within the district.
I, and I think you're right. And that's something that we are certainly, uh, want to take a look at. I think it's a little bit, it's a separate conversation than looking at just raises for next year. But I definitely think, um, we need to have that conversation as well and look more at our hiring. Well, I, from the board, um, they would like Lyle to kind of s- strip out, um, some of the, uh, extra um, things that he put in and just really focus on our staff apples to apples. Yeah, so that you can see, you know, what we spent, uh, between this year and last year. Is that correct?
Yeah, the last question for Lyle is, Lyle, does this satisfy our minimum wage? Issues that we might be coming up in, in the next, I think it's going to get hit twice this year or once this year and beginning of next, right?
Well, the, the minimum wage, the minimum wage issue really won't be a tremendous issue for our non-union, uh, employees here with the exception of substitutes and, uh, some of our, uh, playground supervisor employees and so forth who are non-union, but they're also very limited part-time. Um, we're going to be coming with some recommendations on that, but, uh, we haven't, uh, crunched all the numbers with our current staff to, to see exactly what those costs are going to be. But I, yes, we're going to have, uh, if not for July, definitely by January, we're going to have an issue that we're going to have to resolve with at least some of our staff, uh, both, uh, in, uh, those, uh, groups that aren't necessarily represented here and also some in Acme as well. So we'll have a negotiation issue that we're going to have to work with.
So in any of these, any of these categories, the three administrative clerical, obviously probably not administrative, but clerical maintenance and technologies or anybody that we have to worry about the minimum wage?
No.
Okay.
So, so Lyle, this is Mr. Brown. How does this line up with our mo- market value, you know, as we compare to other districts with these raises? Are we in line with market value? Did you look at that when you consider the proposed raises?
Uh, yeah, so the, you know, the market rate is, is kind of, uh, hanging around that C P I level. Some districts have gone a little bit above it to adjust for, uh, freezes or whatever that they may have had. But, uh, you know, it looks like, uh, this is about the employee rate for the raises, at least from the, uh, the forecast five data that I was able to access.
Okay, and, and what is, so you're trying to align these raises up with C P I? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, the administrative raise is lined up with, uh, C P I. The, we, the other, the non-administrative, uh, employees would be at, uh, three percent, which would be in keeping with, uh, their union counterparts.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Okay, Lyle, you can have that chart maybe later in. Okay, Lyle, you can have that chart maybe later in this week?
I'll, if nothing else, it'll be with the FYI, but I will try to get it to you sooner.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Lyle. And then, and then one last thing, and maybe this is for Ken, just kind of, I, you know, a total increase, or total package increase of $236,000. Like, like to get some sense before the vote of kind of where that fits into our budget or budget deficit?
Right. When I, when I gave you those projections, remember those, the three-year projection that I put together? For next year, for everybody, for both administrative and non-clerical, or non-union salaries, I put in a flat 3% increase.
Okay.
Now, so this is a little bit less than that.
So you already covered then technically under the budget.
Technically, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for human resources?
I just want to know if I can.
Sure. Go ahead, Brenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you could follow up with me on the EEO one report.
Oh, EEO one, that was the other thing. Okay.
Okay. Any old business? Okay, any new business? Okay, you know, we, we don't have our self-evaluation sheets out this week. I, I guess what I would ask each of the board members, if you could shoot me an email and just kind of what worked well tonight, what didn't, and so we can try to improve before our next meeting to the extent we can. So this is all new territory for all of us. So any feedback would be appreciated.
Nelson, why do we not have the self-evaluation? Just because it's our first virtual meeting?
Well.
I'm sorry, not, there was supposed to be another evaluation tonight that did not take place. Or did we not have closed because of our newness to this?
No, the, the superintendent evaluation forms were due to me today. I will compile them and get them out to you so we can have discussion enclosed at next Tuesday's meeting. That was always the plan.
Oh, I thought they were due so we could discuss it today.
No, no.
And I misunderstood that.
Due to me so that I could compile.
Okay.
And then.
I didn't have to rush. Okay.
Yeah. No, we're still on track for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Kara, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
You have that, Janine?
Yep, 8:43.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Mrs. Tobin? Are you there? Okay, I'll email her. I'm not sure how I'd get my information to her, but I was gonna ask her now. Thanks, guys. Sorry.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye. Bye. Saved.